Morning, everybody. Today is February 27, 2025. It's Thursday, and we're here for a work session. Our work session's starting at 9:00 a.m. today. We're going to open up, immediately go to executive session because of scheduling of people that can appear for our matter on for discussion. Then we will return back for open session once we're done with that. So if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance, and Ken, would you mind leading us with the pledge?
Absolutely, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Okay. We are gonna make a have a motion in a second to close open session, and we're going to go into executive session to discuss matters surrounding the sale and lease of real property, and that will be with Thomas, Prudential, and Hurley. If I could have a motion to close open session and go into executive.
Some of.
Executive.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are closed. We're going to executive session. I'm not sure how long this is going to last, people, but we will be back and go open again as soon as we finish with this matter. So we're assuming somewhere around 10 o'clock, but don't hold me to that. It could be after that, or it could be before that. Okay. Morning, everybody. We are back from one stint of executive session. We're now going to go into open session, and the first matter up today will be matters surrounding monthly police report with Chief Frost. And sitting in for Chief Frost today is Captain Wilsie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good. How are you?
Good. So for the January 2025 report, our total incidents in 2025 January compared to last year was almost very identical. We have 2994 for this January compared to 2962 of last year. For summonses this year, we have 1,042 compared to 1,136 last year. Criminal incidents, almost identical, 164 this year compared to 165 last year. Noncriminal, very close, 2830 this year to 2797 last year. Just to go through some of our highest number of noncriminal incidents, we have eight cases, commercial alarms, motor vehicle stops, and school crossings. We had a total of 139 motor vehicle accidents with one fatality. Seventy-two subjects arrested with a total of 100 charges. Town summonses broken down. We have 43 town summonses, 789 T sleds, and 210 parking summonses. For reportable incidents, our highest number is for shoplifting, which we usually do see that highest number month over month. It did decrease coming from December to January by five. We have 57 in December, 52 this January. Simple assaults also decreased from 22 to 15. We had a total of 14 driving under the influence arrests. So as far as we have crime control now in the police department, they have cleared 43 investigations by arrest.
That's great.
Yes, they did complete two details with several stores on Route 58 with their security guards. They all came in on the weekends. The security guards came in. Some of the stores had eight to 10 extra security guards in looking for shoplifters, any petal arsony. We did have arrests out of two stores. They're looking to do more of those, shoplifting, petal arsony. Grand arsony is usually some of our highest offenses, and the stores are gathering that we're working with them, and they're having more employees come in, more security guards. So it's definitely beneficial for the public, for them, for everybody. Officer Murphy is now our highway patrol officer as of February 2nd. Since that date, he has 154 traffic summonses, three arrests, with seven total DEs so far this year. We have several subjects over the course of the past year. I have a packet here who have several arrests varying charges. Just we have about nine pages of people who have 10, 15 separate arrest charges, and you can see what we're working with DA's office. We have some one subject here has a total of about 10 to 12 petal arsonies. Eventually, he's charged with burglary after having a trespass affidavit signed, so they're willing to increase the charges as things go. And we had one nonfatal overdose and zero fatal overdoses for the month of January.
So bail reform is working. Catch and release is working well on the side of the criminal.
It takes a little bit of time, but you know.
Well, you're saying that sarcastically. I agree with you.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it took some time, but they did increase the charges for this one subject, so hopefully going forward.
But it takes 10 arrests, right?
Takes a lot. Definitely takes a lot.
And how many people are the same people that re-arrested and re-arrested?
Over. You can see there's a we have a lot.
This is this is.
Top 10 list.
And what's that do you know what that is doing? More security guards, right? That's more money. That's more cost to the retailer.
Sure.
More employees, more cost to the retailer. Who's going to pay for it? The public that are going in there, the honest people, and they're going to pay for all this extra support.
Right.
Good job, Governor Hope.
Any questions regarding the data we have here or nothing?
I think that's great about the French.
Yeah, that's good. They're doing a great job. They're really great.
Thank you. Great job, Danielle. All right.
I really appreciate what you guys are doing.
Good, Captain.
All right.
Thank you much. All right, next up, we have matters surrounding the monthly justice court report with I don't see her. Counselor Serru.
She stood us up.
Get her. We have Victoria, or who's doing the judicial justice work?
Do code enforcement.
Okay. Matters surrounding monthly code enforcement report, Richard Downs. Are you off duty today? Are you poking when you sit down?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody has the handout? Okay. This month, we opened up 59 new complaint investigations. The escalated categories I underlined. We had no COs or no strip of vacancies. We had 10 overcrowded houses. We had four. Property maintenance, we had four. We did six rental verifications. Residential building, no permits, we had 10. And zoning violations, we had three. We have approximately 139 cases still under investigation from last year. We've issued 54 summonses and violations for the month of January. Violations include no rental permits, no building permits, no COs, litter on commercial properties, importation, exportation of materials, unlawful signs, rubbish, weeds, violations of an approved site plan, unsafe building structures, various summonses for the New York State Property Maintenance Code, and zoning infractions. Potential Supreme Court actions forward to the town attorney. We have presented two cases of ours and forwarded these cases to the town attorney for potential Supreme Court actions. Rental properties, we continue to inspect the rental properties in the town of Riverhead. Inspections, we have inspected approximately 90 residential type houses and 60 apartment units. Okay, fees.
Is that 90 in the month or since January?
It's just the month of January. Yeah. And 60 apartments. Fees, we've collected approximately $49,575 in rental fees for the month of January, and that's our total revenue, obviously, because this is one month. So if the board requires anything further, I have detailed reports also. Can you even?
I have one question, Rich.
Sure.
So has Open Gov helped you streamline the application process?
Oh, absolutely. We're hit the ground running now, so we're in the first month with the Open Gov, and the public seems to like it, so.
Saving you a lot of time.
Saving a lot of time. Yeah. That's what we wanted to hear.
Rich, I have a question. Since changing the code now with the number of cars people are allowed to have, have you been been able to go after individuals who are still continuing to park too many cars at the residences?
Yeah, we're still the ability's there since the code's been codified, so we're looking at that now. Keep in mind that those that code was only codified for rental properties.
Right.
So those are the ones that we're looking at.
Okay. Are you being able to find violations of that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Let's get her down.
Good day.
All right, we're going to go on, I guess, to number four, since I don't see. Oh, wow. No wonder I don't see her. Okay. Matters surrounding justice court report. Victoria Serru, come on up. You're hiding back there.
Sorry. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so everyone has a copy. I have extra copies just in case. Okay, so pretty standard month. We did get a good bit in light mitigation, and also I've been working on the yearly report that Councilman Rothwell had mentioned on the last date. So I have all of these in a spreadsheet, and we were made aware of the of collecting these surcharges back in mid-March of last year. So I have all of them up until the end of February this month, so I just want to get one more full month of March, and then we'll have that full year. I don't know if you want to start in January or not, but we'll have March.
I think maybe we'll do March.
Okay.
Because we'll have a year.
Yeah.
But then going forward, we'll do January 1 to December 1.
Got it. So I have all of them here, and I you know, these are just the surcharges, then we have the grand total. So after the 12 months, I'll have the total for all of them by the end of March, and then we'll have a clear view of what has gone on in the last year and how many we've potentially collected.
Thank you.
Not much else to say. I did have a couple of parking trials. We have a few town code trials coming up, but nothing nothing out of the ordinary. If there's any questions.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Thanks.
There we go.
They were great over there, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, short and sweet.
Yep.
Great day.
Okay, we're up to number four, matters surrounding monthly town clerk report with Jim Oatman.
Number four is number four.
Number four you are today.
Thank you. January was a typically from my learning is probably a slower month than most months only because of the turn of the new year. FOI requests were up, you know, 242. We are looking at that new next request from Civic Plus, which is a great program, by the way, so we should be interested in that probably within four or five weeks. It's an excellent program. So I think it's going to help out a lot as far as curtailing the amount of work that my girls have to do. Otherwise, it's pretty self-explanatory. I know one of the concerns that you were bringing up or that I have is with public speakers at public hearings or town board meetings. So I know we're looking sometimes I miss a name, and I don't want to interrupt the meeting and say, could you please tell me your name? So I asked I ordered three by five cards, which I'm going to get printed up with name and Hamlet, and I might want to set a table up in the back for people to put their name and Hamlet if they're going to speak. And just turn it I'll put a box up here, they can drop the card in there when they come to speak, just so I have a list of I want to be accurate in the minute keeping of who spoke.
And who's talking, too.
And where they're from.
Right.
You know, so even if it's just that, you know, just to have them listed, they should get credit for coming and taking the time to speak, and I feel bad when I miss the name. So I'm going to implement that, the cards are in order now, so I'll have them printed up, and if we're going to start doing that at the town board meeting, that would help me out a lot. We are interviewing tomorrow for bilingual clerk. We had a list of like 10. I think I got two coming in tomorrow, and the one from yesterday didn't show.
Right.
So I certainly want to work with you, Ken, and work with the new Spanish committee.
Absolutely.
I spoke with the head of it the other day, and I'd like to be on their agenda, maybe to speak to them.
Absolutely.
I want to throw the net out wider to make it more appealing for people to come. It's a great job, and it's convenient in the middle of the day like that. I know there's somebody out there that's looking, and I just want to make sure I capture them, so.
Absolutely.
So we're looking at that, and today we have a meeting with Laser Fish, which is a collective of online searching. It's today's just an introductory type meeting, so I know I don't know how fast we're going to do on that, but it's a program where it might cut down a lot on your FOI request because of what it is, is it allows people to do their own research. They can research tax properties and planning documents. I know a lot of it's probably 18 months just to get it uploaded as far as all the old stuff, but it's something we're looking at. I know Southhold has it, it's very it probably cut down a lot on your on your FOI request because people can do their own research at that point, and they don't have to you know, so that'll free up a lot of manpower.
Jim, excuse me, what time is that meeting?
3:00.
Okay.
Yeah, 3:00.
Just 242 FOI requests, it's just it's multiple departments, it's just an astronomical amount of time.
It is, but I would say a good 80% of them are all building. They're all talking about COs and stuff like that, and I and believe me, I think they one full-time staff up there does nothing with FOIs, and I know there's always backlog 140, but that's that's just the flow. I mean, you get some done, but it's just it just keeps piling, 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 piling.
Yeah, anyway, to simplify it would be great.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I yeah, I don't know how yeah, I'm thinking Laser Fish would do that. I mean, that's probably a year or so now. It depends, of course, it's a price point, we have to find out with all that.
Well, CDA is, I think, is filing for $75,000 grant.
Right.
Do that scanning, and then we'll prioritize.
Well, I know they have staff that do that, company, which is good, because I can't imagine the undertaking of trying to upload documents and that, but anyway, we're looking at it's all in an effort to try to create more transparency for public to do their you know, there's nothing to hide, so I think we're moving along that way to and then I know with the new and then next month in March, we're going to start with the agenda management portion of the Civic Plus, which is the real big thing. That's what we're talking about, you know, new minutes, maybe some AI with transcriptions, all those things that we that we cut out because of the price points and necessity. So we're looking to forward that we're forward-thinking on all of that, and I appreciate the board for doing that with me as well. And that's it for us.
You've been impressive, Jim.
Thank you very much.
All this stuff.
You say that all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding the Business Advisory Committee presentation with Rothwell and Bergman.
I'm going to ask Councilman Kern to partake on this. So the Business Advisory Committee has worked on this, and we just kind of changed our liaisons in the beginning of January. So it was something I realized that I think you were 90, 95% there to the finish line, so I wanted to give them the opportunity to kind of clear some of the slate and some of the things that they've been working on over the last year. So Marty has come here today to kind of explain some of their concerns about some of the relations we have.
We had one item that we've been working on during the past year. I'm here, I tweaked what I previously sent, so this is and I have this dated today.
Yeah, because they had the other.
Okay, so I have it dated today. It's the same thing, but it's just tweaked a little bit. And basically, I'm I'm here not individually, I'm representing the advisory committee, who at our last meeting, we had reviewed this, we had been reviewing it before, and polled the committee, and they all wanted to bring this before the board. Basically, what what sort of sparked this was the change in the code with regard to the previous pavers being now impervious. That was done at the August 6 resolution. So the what it says is that you can no longer use pervious pavers for increases in certain site development, and I believe it was intended toward parking, because a lot of developers were using pervious pavers to increase their parking spaces. And I get it, that's really not the intent of what the pavers are for. So the code change was was made, and then, you know, that created some restrictions and some concerns with certain property owners who had projects pending. So what we looked at was the code as the code, it was adopted, is what was causing owners to use more expensive pervious pavers to gain parking instead of pavement, because it's much more expensive, and why would they do that? And what we found after asking that question is that it was really the result of what we feel is a glitch in the zoning code as the dimensional table. So the dimensional table has building footprint, lot coverage, and then it has total impervious surface. So when we were thinking about it, why did that happen? We put together a sketch, which I have as a previous sketch, and on the left side of the sketch, we drew up a 50-car parking lot, basic 50 cars, very efficient. There isn't an inch of parking here that's that's not required for 50 cars. The 24-foot aisles, the 10-by-20 parking spaces, a little dumpster corral, and a run of sidewalk that would lead to a building in the street. And this is bare minimum, 50 cars is 2,000 22,950 square feet. It's what that a 50-car parking lot minimum requirement is for area. Now, when you relate that to the parking requirements in the code, for example, we use in the zones we were looking at, we use some of the more common uses like office, medical office, retail. When you look at the calculation here, the 50 cars at 150 for medical gets you a 7,500 square foot building, which is the smaller rectangle. It gets you 10,000 square feet of office, which is the middle rectangle, and it would get you 12,500 square foot of retail, which is the larger rectangle. So when you look at the what those 50 cars get you in terms of building footprint, okay? And you do a calculation, what happens is, in order to park, if you have 50 cars and you have the building that results in 50 cars, the parking area is on average two times bigger than the building footprint. So without being two times bigger, you can't provide enough parking to develop the site. So when you look at the next page, there were a number of zones, many of them are right on the note, especially the bigger retail ones, but there were a number of zones where you look at, for example, you know, a good example would be starting at the bottom of the PRC code. Right now, you're allowed 20% building area, but you're only allowed 40% total area. So you can never achieve under the code at 40% the full building footprint area. Just it just doesn't work. Now there, if you did it two to one with the average, it would go up to 60 instead of the current 40. However, that particular zone happens to have a maximum 50% because it's the entrance to Riverhead, that's all along like West Main Street, and they and more landscaping is wanted there. So the max that could be or should be would be 50, not 60. But the other ones, for example, the I know the industrial all changed, but you know, big ones were the rural corridor is right now you had 10%. That really should go to 30% on the impervious. The residential campus, right now, it's 20%, and it goes up to 25% with sewer, but it would only go to 60% on the impervious surface. And if you went with the sewer, it should really go to 75. And the Hamlet Center was is 35% lot coverage. It really, if you computed that two to one, it ends up being over 100%. So probably the maximum you would want would be something around 80%. So just in looking at this, we just saw that there was a disparity in some of these zones on the on the code. And then the other question that we had, which was that the way that it was written, I believe, because Greg, this was put in the in the portion of the code for parking, I believe that this is only intended to capture parking, not impervious surface, impervious pavers elsewhere on the site. But the way it's written, it says, and shall contribute to the impervious surface calculation for the purposes of zoning. If that were the case, then not only, you know, you need more room for the parking, but you couldn't even the minimum you do is the parking, a sidewalk, and a building. So if you wanted to do any other development on a site, like this is just another sketch, a copy of this sketch that I get a chip overlay on, for example, if you wanted to split the building in half, you know, do two smaller footprints and put like, let's say, a drainable paver like full terrace, you know, my son had Lasik surgery, so I drove him, and I had to wait an hour. And instead of sitting in a they had a very nice appointed, you know, waiting room, but I wanted to make some calls. I went outside, and they had a really nice area with some seats, and you know, I sat down, made some calls, it was a beautiful day. You couldn't do something like that if the impervious pavers also count toward other than parking. So the two things that the committee looked at was the those couple of zones that the impervious is low, it should be increased, and that it should be clarified that the that the pervious pavers can still be used for other than other than parking. So that was what we came up with, and I'm glad Greg's here, because I know we had a discussion with him.
This has been going on for a while.
So I'll start off by saying, I don't disagree. There's some some of the dimensional regulations for some of the zoning districts are a little bit incongruous with the dimensional regulations in terms of pervious, impervious. At a basic level, just the the use of impervious surface coverage as one of the limiting dimensional regulations, I don't know it necessarily achieves what we're looking to. At a basic level, we're looking at developed area or undeveloped area. You know, when you drive past a site, whether it's a gravel parking lot or an asphalt parking lot, it's still developed area. So I you know, I do think we can work on the code. I'm trying to look at some other towns and how they, you know, impose their dimensional regulations. For example, Smithtown doesn't have any zoning dimensional regulations regarding impervious surface. They have building lot coverage, floor area ratio, and then they just have minimum landscaped areas, which may be a simpler route, you know, again, well, I think this is something we'll bring up at code revision, but there may be a simpler way to sort of guide development of properties, because again, at a basic level, it's either a developed surface or an undeveloped surface. You know, the way the the way the code was originally written, you have the use of pervious pavers was supposed to be an alternative to traditional drainage systems. It was not supposed to be a workaround for, you know, an application that's potentially looking for, you know, and exceed to exceed the allowable FAR building lot coverage. It was not never intended to intensify the levels of development that were intended for a piece of property. You know, for the boards now, the medical office, I was proposed at the corner of 374 Main Road, Main Road and Union, for example, met the the maximum floor area ratio that they were allowed in that RLC zoning district. They were using their parking supply, essentially all pervious pavers, where the in order in order to facilitate that development, it probably would have been closer to about 40%. So there can be some workaround in terms of, you know, we'll bring this to code revision, but in terms of exempting sidewalks, terraces, I mean, again, not that someone would, but someone could build a very large terrace, which again equates to just a developed area on the property that's not necessarily landscaped or otherwise.
So I would I would recommend, I mean, if that's I understand you're bringing it to code, but to work with, you know, also work with the Business Advisory Committee, who are builders and stuff like that, because I I remember when we went over this with you and Dawn and Marty, and you acknowledged at that time, this needs to be, you know, fixed, which I think is great, so.
I do think there has to be a landscape component in it, as opposed to just square, paving everything right out. I do like where some of the new construction that's in taking place, that we're doing kind of, you know, where the lighting is and so forth, some kind of internal plantings and designs, and it just, it makes a parking lot a little bit more appealing and aesthetically looking nice. But then, I understand their battle of not wanting to give up overall development space, you know, and it shouldn't be counted against it. So, to me, incorporating landscape really, you know, shouldn't negate the size of their building, you know, because they want to make their parking lots more appealing, like that.
Yeah, and I also think that, that issue with the, I think that's a great idea, having a landscape component. Because then it allows them to put in like, an area like a terrace where you could go and sit outside, or if they had like a little small ice cream shop, people could stop and then sit out and eat their ice cream instead of having to sit in a car. Because developers are going to look at it and say, well, if I'm limited to my building area based on this, then I'm not going to have that little terrace that's nice for people to sit at. I'm just going to do building and parking and that's it. You know, and make the development less attractive.
And I don't want developers cutting out sidewalks and other passageways, like meaning that where curbs are just coming right up to the front of buildings because, oh, we don't have the space, we don't want to give up a 36-foot wide, you know, sidewalk passageway. I'd rather them be able to do that, to develop around it. It makes it more safety, just especially in winter, shoveling snow and everything else, where do you, where do you go and stuff, you know?
Safety, but aesthetically, aesthetically, it looks so much better that way.
So, does this also give you the opportunity of looking at each one of these zone use districts differently?
Yeah, I mean, I think, basically what I'm trying to get is, that's what we really need to do. There should just be, using impervious surface coverage, I don't want to say it's arbitrary, but again, it should be, we should have requirements and there should just be minimum landscaped areas. So, for example, if there was a zoning district where we said, all right, minimum landscaped area, 25%, the remainder of that property could then be a developed surface. Obviously, when an engineer and architect designs a site plan, they have to use sound engineering principles, they have to provide the adequate drainage, you know, if it's a SWF, they have to provide a certain storage capacity. So, I mean, that stuff is sort of assumed, you know, that's built into the site plan process and the development process. But just from a basic level, you know, I think we can come up with something that's a little more streamlined, a little bit easier for a developer, and frankly, for more in, you know? Because we're sitting here, well, impervious, you know, it's, it's almost a minutia when we just, when you look at the, the big picture, it's either a developed surface or a landscaped surface. And I think that would sort of lead to a better understanding, both on the part of the developers, as well as the planning department, when we get an application, rather than have to go through everything with a comb and try to, you know, pick stuff out and identify it. So, I think that could work, you know, for all parties.
A real good example of that is that PRC where the town, it's a legislative intent that you had when you adopted that zoning, where for those properties, it says 50% landscaping because it's the entry coming on West Main Street into Riverhead. So, on that, it's very clear, we could go right to 50%. But yet, it says that the impervious is only 40, and then you can't use pavers to get to 50, and it's like, okay, so what do we do? So, like, that one should be a good example, if it was 50% landscaping, then we know we could go up to 50% on the other surfaces. And of course, less restrictive on other zones that, like Greg is saying, where you may have 25, you may have, you know, setup like that, just much easier, so.
I appreciate, because I know how much time was spent when I was the liaison on this committee, and also appreciate the fact that, you know, everybody worked together to get to this point.
Like, you know, Bob, I got them to the work session.
You can have all the credit, I'm just glad it's happening.
I just, I do want to say though, like, this is, to me, was quite complicated stuff. So, I'm just, I want to commend you for simplifying this, by just doing your diagrams. It took, really, honestly, like, when you, you're going to start talking pervious pavers, impervious pavers, like, hold on a second, wait, you simplified it, and so thank you because it's very clear cut.
I had all those ratios before and I was getting confused.
I don't know, this was a lot of work for you to put together, so.
Well, the committee were glad that we were doing well.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're going to skip over item 6 right for now, and we're going to go to matter 7, matters surrounding landmarks preservation committee presentation. Joanne and Richard Wines?
Good morning.
Come on up.
How are you today?
Good, Joanne. Nice to see you.
Might have a little PowerPoint presentation.
Keep you well entertained. All right, slide two. Good morning, Richard, how are you?
Good morning.
So, today, I have invited people from the landmark preservation, they're on the liaison to this wonderful group, and they're going to present a PowerPoint today so that the residents are able to see what our committee does. Of course, it's landmark preservation, obviously, but a lot of people don't realize all that your committee does, and I think that it's important that they see what you've done, what we're doing now, what the future might look like. And I know you have a lot of slides, so we're going to try to go through them as quickly as Richard can. So, take it away.
Well, thank you, and I have to say, it's great for Jim and I to be here with you. I think it's been five or six years since we did a presentation before the town board. Last one was before the pandemic, and it's important to show our support for all the things that you've done for historic preservation over the years. Anyway, just very quickly, our commission, of course, in addition to our wonderful town board advisor here.
Thank you.
Joanne, Stephanie Bale, Alta Ilumín, Peter Lucas, Joe Fretschelli, Kelly Schoger, and Jim. So, and I thought I should give just a quick review of some of the things that we're responsible for. Over the years, the town board has created four different historic districts. There's one very large one that covers basically all of downtown. There's another one that covers the, most of the Hamlet area in Jamesport and stretching down as far as the Jedediah Hawkins Inn. And of course, South Jamesport is another significant historic area in the town. And the fourth one is out in Waiting River. In addition to that, I do want to thank Mike Zaleski, by the way. We've been trying to get signage in all of these districts, and we just did the Waiting River one in the last few months, and he was great in getting all of these signs up. There's also a number of individual designated town landmarks, of course, all designated by the town board. Altogether, in between the historic districts and the landmarks, there's about 400 historic structures in the town that have some level of protection that's been designated by the town boards. We have a very historic town. And I have to say, I was always pleased when I started seeing, coming along 58 and the signs of historic downtown, because it's one of the things that sets Riverhead apart and makes it special, why people want to come. We also have a couple of national register districts. And national register is a little different because it's done by the state and the federal government. It brings a lot of prestige and recognition, and it also brings some tax credits for when homeowners do restoration work on their homes, and it can also bring a 40% tax credit when income-producing properties do major renovation projects. So, there is some, some nice benefits there. So, Main Street is basically one of these national register districts. The area north of Rain Street, we call it the Second and Nostrander District, is also under the national register, so things like the Firehouse could take advantage of those credits, and there's a number of other buildings there that, you know, the goal is to provide some incentives to, for people to do the right thing and preserve what makes this town special. We qualified all of Main Road to be on the national register, but it got complicated because parts of the district went into the South Old, and so we ended up withdrawing that nomination, which would be nice to get the Riverhead part in at least, but we haven't gone back to that. And then there's a bunch of individual sites that are on the national register too. The Jedediah Hawkins is one of them, my brother's farm's another. And then the last historic designation was done 50 years ago, and Sound Avenue, the town board and the state legislature designated Sound Avenue as a scenic and historic corridor. So, that was, you're really looking forward, I think, to its importance. And moving to the present, one of the things our commission does is we maintain a watch list of buildings that we're concerned about, that we try to make sure the right thing happens. We review this at every one of our meetings. This is one of the buildings that when I was, we did our last presentation, I think it was five years ago, was on our watch list, on the corner of South Jamesport Avenue and I think it's Third Street. And pleased to say, there it is today.
Great.
That was one of the stars on the South James, Historic South Jamesport House Tour this summer, for instance. So, good things often can happen. In fact, most of the ones that were on our watch list then are often restored. Another one that was on our watch list then was this one right on the corner of 105 and Route 25.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and here's what's happening to it today. So, again, I give the developer there, the girl, credit for that. Another one that was on our watch list was the old Hockeiser House on, on Second Street. And this is actually a benefit of the historic district, is that developers, builders know they're in the district, and they tend to do the right thing. And, you know, we didn't have to do anything here. I mean, they've done a beautiful restoration, we approved the addition on the back to replace one that had basically fallen off, but, so again, and this will help that area, Second Street, which is really looking in good shape now, take the lead in that whole area. Another landmark, we have a small, it's not an official town landmark, but everyone sees it as a landmark, is this barn and half hollow, and I'm pleased to say that the Ross Wheeler family has come through and done this marvelous restoration. They don't know what they're going to do with it, but they're pleased to have this building back in shape.
The wakes of a photography club, that's probably the most photographed structure.
It's artist subject number one in the town, right? So, having it look like that again is really great.
It snows, they run there, in springtime, they run there.
Exactly.
Coming over the top of it.
Right, exactly. No, it's a, it's a great landmark. The, these are buildings that are still on our watch list, and I know this is for sale, but it's not a town landmark. But actually, the back part of this building is one of the oldest houses in Riverhead, dates to the late 1700s. And so, we, I've talked to the realtor, and so we're certainly hoping we get a buyer here that will be sympathetic. The town board, over the years, has passed some incentives to help preservation on 58, there are extra building areas allowed, and there is some tax incentives. So, if they increase the value of the property, there's a 10-year reduction there. So, those are nice things that you guys have done over the years. We always hope for this one down in South Jamesport. This is up on Sound Avenue, the Holtz House. State Parks is, has a plan for its restoration now, so that looks like it's moving forward, which is great. This is a sad story. One of our most wonderful landmarks had a terrible fire, but I think they're putting together a plan. I didn't think it was going to be possible, but I think they're putting together a plan to bring that back. So, let's, let's hope that happens. This is another one on our watch list, it's on, in Laurel, basically. I put two old pictures up there, the one on the bottom, that's through one of my great-great uncles, by the way. And so, you can see what the house once looked like and could look like, but we're very concerned with the way it looks right now, and hoping that something good happens there. Another one, I did a presentation about a year ago here, and I have to say, LIPA and PSEG have been wonderful about this. They're working with us, they're offering to contribute to restoration and maybe supporting something there. We've got some funding lined up, but we're still, Bob, you're actively involved in this. Do you want to say anything more?
Not, I'm not really, except that we are moving forward with this, and we're waiting for the architect rendering, and then we'll continue on with this.
You did a great job saving this, Joanne, and the committee saved it. They were going to knock it down.
Right, exactly.
And it dates back to like the 1850s.
Yeah, and they now recognize that it's a significant historic resource. We are hoping that we can get a not-for-profit in there, we're still working on a couple. And, but the very least, there needs to be some signage saying that this is very significant historic property, very important part of the town of Riverhead, but also has these technology history connections back to the first generating plant here and the Wohola Mill that was there on the property. So, we're working on it, we don't have a final solution yet, these things take time, but...
It was within 30 days of the wrecking ball.
Oh, I know, I know.
I remember that.
It took months to save this.
That was great to save.
Right, well, I thank you for your support, because that's what got the attention of LIPA and PSEG, basically.
I can see it as a beautiful little boutique art studio over there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we're trying to interest East End Arts in it.
That would be great.
It's one of, one of the possibilities. It's a great location, right there in the river. There's actually already a boat launch site on the, on the property. So, and the building is structurally very sound. They built that building to withstand vibrations of steam engines.
Right, right.
So, it's basically in good shape. The last one on our watch list, of course, you guys own. And it's part of this wonderful row of three Italianate right across from the courthouse, and I know you're working on an RFP, and I think that's really the way to go, to put out an RFP, bring in someone who's willing to preserve the structure. I did inspection with Andreas and Kentesta, and the building's basically very sound, it obviously needs some TLC on the outside, and the inside is ready for whatever anyone wants to do with it. And also comes, the building next door is on the market, so somebody could buy those two, put them together in the back, and have, you know, wonderful complex of law offices or something. So, it has a lot of potential. So, I hope the town board gets that out there. The town shouldn't have to take care of things like this, but people, and it's, because it's in the national register district, it's eligible for 40% tax credits for anyone that's doing it for something like that.
Very good advertising.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
We actually did a video last week of the house next door, that will be aired in a few weeks. Oh, great. So, you'll get to see the inside of, of the house and the history of it. Looking forward to that.
So am I. This is another problem we faced. This was one of the oldest houses in Waiting River, probably dated back to the 1760s.
Where is this? I don't even recognize this.
It's just north of the little commercial center there, it's, it's just north of the old...
Oh, it's behind the Duck Pond?
Yeah, it's just north, and it's right on the road. And without any permits, let alone getting landmarks approval, they didn't even get building permits.
Oh.
It got changed into this. It's the kind of thing that you've been fighting, Tim, and other places.
They did it during COVID.
Flouting the town code, basically. But I'm pleased to say, we're working with the current owner, and you can see on the bottom, he's agreed to make it look like that, and then the windows look kind of like the one you see up on the top. So, this appears to be moving in the right direction. It will be an asset to the historic district rather than I saw in the historic district. So, I'm, I do want to thank the owners there for being willing to do the right thing.
They had no choice.
Shouldn't have done the wrong thing.
It's a trade zone that did the wrong thing, but yeah, it's totally great.
Now I recognize it, I know.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a little hard to see, but the side of it's right against the road.
Yeah, I do know.
So, it's a prominent spot. I want to show you this one, this was, the house in the, up above is right on the corner of South Jamesport Avenue. And this is one of the benefits of having this town designated a historic district, is a property owner and architect came in and proposed what you see on the bottom, with a kind of blank wall facing South Jamesport Avenue, which is the main thoroughfare in South Jamesport, and, and without much effort, just reminding them that it was in an historic district, and they should be looking around them a little bit and trying to make it fit in. They changed it so it's going to look like that on the front, and that on the side. And I don't think that's a significant additional expense for the, but just rearranging the windows a little bit and changing the siding a little bit, they turned it so it's, and this just happens to be the site of James Tuttle's original hotel, Jamesport. So, it's a very historic site and one of the most prominent ones. But now we're going to get something that's going to be an asset to the area. It's almost just by asking, saying, you know, this is a historic district, see that sign? A couple other things we've done, you may have noticed the... A couple other things we've done. You may have noticed the little landmark historic trail signs all around downtown.
There's a lot of fun.
Yeah, and you can do it, of course, you can go on the web, town website or the Business Improvement District website, and you can do it from the comfort of your couch, if you want to walk it that way. I was talking a few months ago to a lawyer from Tumi Blazem Shea. He says, oh, we went on our front door and we saw the sign up there. So that's interesting. So they started doing all the other ones around downtown. So it seems to be working, but it's another way.
It's so informative.
Yeah, right. It's another way of promoting, you know, historic downtown. Then, of course, the town board designated Bell Town as a heritage area, which I think was a, a great move and to recognize the contribution of all of those people that came up in the Great Migration from, from Virginia and that area, and have become an important part of our town's fabric. One of, just mentioned in closing, a few current things we're working on. One of them is, we want to do some, a couple of historic markers that we can apply to the Palmeroy Foundation for Grants. They'll do these. And both of them are connected to the history of slavery here in the North Fork. Some of you know I'm also involved with the North Fork Project, is researching that. And we'd like to put a Palmeroy sign up on Sound Avenue, near the end of West Lane, to celebrate the story of Sarah Robbins. This is a remarkable story. She was actually, her mother was Indian. She was enslaved by James Partial, who was basically one of Riverhead's founders. So slavery was here from the very beginning. This girl was born into slavery. She was, as a girl, she was sold to one of the owners of the mill downtown, Parker, who then sold her to somebody in Southampton, who then sold her to somebody in New York City, who sold her to a ship's captain, who sent her to Madeira. She got to Madeira, and all this time she's protesting, says, I'm Indian. I'm not supposed to be enslaved. The state's just passed a law about this. So, and she talked to the British Council there, because this is, of course, this is, we're talking 1700s, so it's still part of England. And he said, well, you have two choices. You can either stay here and become Catholic, or you can go back to New York and petition for your freedom. So she went back to New York and petitioned for her freedom. We don't know what happened, fortunately. We, but we have the petition. So we think there should be a plaque to Sarah, because it's such a great story. And, and then the second one, Brister Young was enslaved by, actually, the minister in Old Steeple Church. And he's buried there in that gravestone, a graveyard. And along with Thomas Austin, who escaped from slavery in the South, two remarkable individuals. So we'd like to put a plaque there for them. Something else we'd like to do, the comp plan update calls for pattern books for Sound Avenue and, and Main Road. And we think this is really important, and I know Dawn Thomas is already looking for grants for this. The pattern book downtown has worked out really well, even without codifying it. And just having something that tells people, this is what you can do to make it look like it fits in. Builders want to do the right thing. So, you know, Dawn's working on grants for that, so that's one of our goals, is to implement that part of the comp plan update. Another recommendation in the comp plan is to give us a 30-day notice whenever they get a demolition permit, so something like this doesn't disappear without anything. It wouldn't give us any powers, but just a chance to talk to the owner. And Victoria Zero is working on this code. And then the last thing I want to bring up, and this is also a recommendation from the comp plan update, and that is to designate Polish Town on the National Register Historic Places. I think you're all very familiar with it, and certainly know it definitely deserves recognition.
I would just like to point out that this was actually started by Diane Tucci.
Exactly.
Came to me and was talking about Polish Town, and just through conversation, we ended up on the phone with you and realized that Polish Town is just Polish Town by the locals. You know, there, there's no actual designation for it, so.
Right, and getting a designation.
For helping us with that.
You know, really adds to the prestige, and of course, it brings the tax credits too. So there, there is, there are some nice benefits there. I'm sure you all know the story, that all these Polish immigrants started arriving here in the 1880s and 1890s, and they almost all came as farm workers. And, but very quickly, they saved the money and started buying farms, on both forks, South Fork and North Fork. But they didn't like having to go to mass in English, because the only church and, only Catholic church was St. John's, and they were Irish, of course, since they worship in English. So they wanted it Polish. So the farmers got together and, and organized a, a society, basically. And they named it after the patron saint of farmers, which of course is Saint Isidore. And then they, they wanted to have a church where they could worship in Polish. So this building was available. It was the Riverhead Academy, which is kind of a private high school. It was way on the outskirts of town, on the northwest side of town, on what was called Cemetery Street then. But Riverhead had built a new high school, so the academy went out of business. So they bought this building, and, and they petitioned the bishop, who was, of course, Irish in Brooklyn, that could have a church. And it took them about a week to say yes. And so they converted this into a church. And then they raised the money, the equivalent of a million and a half dollars, within four years to build this building, which is really an amazing building. It's modeled after, of all things, this church in Rome. It's right at the head of the Spanish Steps there, if any of you have ever been there. Designed by a German architect, who is the favorite architect of the Irish bishop in Brooklyn. And you can see some of the other buildings he built in Queens, and you can see the similarity there, all coming, coming from that same church. But when it was built, this was the Brooklyn Eagle's headline. Finest Roman Catholic edifice on Long Island. The Brooklyn Eagle always asked outside of Brooklyn. They were the local paper there, after all. But it was really an amazing undertaking for these immigrant farmers, most of them were still farm laborers at that point, to raise all that money and build that building. And then very quickly, Polish Hall sprang up, not the current Polish Hall, but its predecessor. It was also built in 1907. And before that, this was just empty area around there. But with the church and the social center, before you knew it, sorry, this is the newer Polish Hall, replaced the old one in 1929, but before you knew it, merchants started building along that area. And so all these immigrants from all of the outlying areas could come to Riverhead, because there were no other Polish churches in them, either fork then. And of course, you could buy anything you needed without having to speak a word of English. So this is really the beginning of Polish Town. It started with the Riverhead Academy, started with the church, the Saint Isidore Society, Polish Hall, and then the merchants. And then, of course, they started building houses around it. So this is the history that we want to develop and celebrate and, and put a bigger spotlight on. The area happens to include some other literal, or almost literal landmarks. The Tin Man certainly has enough of it. It's not a designated town landmark, but, you know, being in the National Historic District could even have some benefits there. Of course, the high school was WPA project. The greenhouses on the bottom, that's the Bartnik Greenhouses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that may be the oldest greenhouse complex on Long Island, George thinks. And the building on the top left, I'm sure none of you recognize, but I think that was the Riverhead Agricultural Works, which was Samuel Terry Hudson. And he invented a famous writing cultivator that was patented all around the country. So, and that's still there, too. So anyway, we already talked about benefits of being on the National Register. Don't need to do that again. We are, I want to say that not just Diane, but Joanne has been very active in making this happen. We've got a little steering committee. Our first step is.
I just want to stop for a moment, yeah, and go back to that list. Georgette Lazar. She was honored at the Black History Month event last Friday at the high school.
Very good, very good, very good. Yeah, she's great.
And also, I just received a couple names from the Polish Civic.
Oh, great.
That they would like to also.
Great, because it's important, but there's a lot of research involved here. We have to document every building and figure out what qualifies to be in the register and, you know, that kind of thing. So it's going to be a lot of work. It could be a year or two to, to get it all done. But I think, you know, celebrating that heritage, given how important is the Riverhead, is, is really important. So, anyway, our first step is we need to get a report out of your GIS person. I know Andreas is working on that right now. We have to document, have to, that report to document every building and when it was built and that kind of thing. So we're working on that, and that's all we wanted to share with you today.
Fantastic, yeah.
Do you want to look for questions or?
You know, I have one question. You know, the house on Main Road that's for sale, how many acres is that?
I think there's like 27 acres back there.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
What house?
The one that has a little barn behind it, I think?
Right, right. There's, there's a, it's right off at the end of the Tuttle's Path. And it has about 27 acres. It is not preserved farmland, as far as I know. But there's a lot of potential there. I mean, restoring that building, there's a, there's a couple of nice barns. There's a Quonset hut barn behind it, too. So I know the Animal Rescue Center talked about going there, but that never worked out. But it'd be really nice to make, it's such a prominent spot. It'd be really nice to make something good happen there.
Who's the original family that had that?
It was the Youngs family. It was part of the Youngs, they owned all the way from the bay to the Sound. And there's a house that's just to the east and way back from the road. It belongs to Andersons now. That, that was where the original Young House was in the 1700s, back when they didn't put houses on the road. So, good.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I know that this was a little lengthy, but the history of Riverhead is so important.
Well, we don't want to make you do that, Tim.
Come on, information is, I just, I love hearing about the history of the town. And for you to be able to just rattle off stuff is incredible. The institutional knowledge here is.
I have a book coming out. It's actually out, but only in the library edition. It costs a hundred dollars. But it's about the family that lived at the Halleck Homestead and their community. And it will be out in paperback in May.
Awesome.
Do any of the homes do a Christmas decoration walk or anything like that? You know, has some homes in different communities, historic homes band together?
We actually sponsored one for the Jamesport Meeting House a few years ago. Yeah, we could do that again. That's a fun thing to do. So, anyway.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Kim, how are the kids?
Moral support, Jim.
How are the kids? Five, yeah. Everyone's doing great.
Excellent.
Well, grandkids, too.
Nice, nice. Joanne, are you putting in a resolution to travel to Rome so you can study how Saint Isidore's church began with architecture?
It's so interesting, though. I just, I love people for that.
Go to matter number eight, matters surrounding annual increase of fire marshal fees.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Fire Marshal Smith. How are you?
All right. So last year, we took our fees out of the code so that we can make them changeable by town board resolution. And the idea is so that we could increase them with the cost of living and stuff like that. We sat down, thought about it, talked to other townships. Fair way of doing that is to incorporate the Consumer Price Index for inflation every year. So the plan going forward, we're looking to pass it for this year. I know it's a little late. But going forward, we'd maybe do it at like the organizational meeting every year. And whatever the CPI percentage is, we'll just incorporate it to our fee so we can keep up, so we're not in a position where 20 years down the line or something, where.
Where we were.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we were thinking about other departments having everybody submit their fees by like December 1st for being up to meet in January 1st.
And fines, and legal fines as well, all of it. So. But you've done, you've been the leader on this, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We agree. And the amount of money brought in by updating them has been fantastic for the market, for the town also.
And now it's not on the backs of other taxpayers, not using this service, which is fantastic.
Yep.
So.
Great job.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, number nine, I need Anne Marie. Okay. It will be matters surrounding the Citizens Cooperative Development Team, or CCDT, which is an ad hoc committee that I have, that I meet with. And guys, if I put this here, can you zoom in on that? We'll get that up. This is basically the, I guess, the mission statement for CCDT that we put together, and we were talking the other day with Anne Marie about it, and how it tends to coincide with what the actual plans have always kind of been for the EPCAL property, so.
Do you want me to turn it up?
That's it? We had a, at our last meeting, just to do a quick summary of that, on January 29th, we discussed the existing habitat map, which is, has been done for quite some time for the EPCAL property. And talking about, is there an update necessary to satisfy the DEC? Probably not, because that should still be okay, but they may ask for an update. We don't know yet.
Correct.
Status of the Riverhead Water District Suffolk County Water Authority and EPCAL dispute. Possible leverage that can be used by our town for the DEC and Suffolk County Water Authority over that dispute and obstacle resolution regarding the argument that Suffolk County Water Authority feels they have the right to provide the water at EPCAL. And we, of course, feel very differently about that. So we may have some conversations with the Suffolk County Water Authority in the near future regarding that, because that's, that's important for the use of EPCAL also. And we also talked about the recreation feasible study at EPCAL, how and how this study can be used in the redevelopment of EPCAL. That's the sports, feasibility study that was done up at EPCAL and in conjunction with using the properties up there for various recreational purposes, whether it's public or private, or a public-private partnership, whatever the case may be. So that was the basis of our last, our last meeting. And just so everybody knows, it's a committee of people with both town workers and people from the public. And the public people are Mark Hobner, Mike Foley, Barbara Blast, and Taki Church. And then we meet, they meet with myself and Anne Marie and Dawn, and Frank Mancini and Cantesta, and Greg Bergman from Planning. And we're just trying to get kind of all the ducks in order for the EPCAL property, when and if we get it back. And I say that when and if, when we get it back.
Yes.
So, you know, that's what we've been doing, and I just wanted to give the public and the board an update on what we've been talking about. So that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions?
When's your next meeting? When is your next meeting?
I want to say it's March, it's in March. I got to come up with the date. I think it's the 19th, but I'm not sure. And any board member is welcome to come to the, to this meeting. It would have to be one of you at a time, because no more than two of us could be there together, but.
So I think if you read the revisioning of EPCAL for the town of Riverhead that came out of the committee, both the volunteers that are acting advisory and we, town employees, I think you'd be hard-pressed to disagree with anything in this statement. But I can tell you, and Dawn can tell you, the volumes, starting back to the Navy in 1998, the FEIS, the VHB studies, which are two huge volumes, probably six, eight inches wide each, together with three or four updated consistency analysis. I mean, we've read through those, probably I've read them all 10, 20 times each. This is consistent with that, just to give you a framework. And what's really beneficial about the Supervisors Advisory Committee that probably doesn't really, it's not a thought in the forefront is, while we're engaged in litigation over EPCAL, the committee and their ideas require staff to keep EPCAL very. fresh and requires us to go into all those documents, extract things, make notes, and educate people where we are, what we've done. There are even documents, and the supervisor is aware of this, there are even updates that have not been public because the process stopped and got stymied. But there are updated records that are sitting there, ready to launch. So, these meetings really stimulate us to keep educated and keep working on EPCAL as it states in this revisioning statement. It is the largest asset that Riverhead has. So, it's critical that we keep on top of it and in front of it. And this group has been a great way to keep staff really projecting, moving forward.
Yeah, no, you want to be ready to go when the day comes that you have the opportunity to, to think about what you're going to do next with it, rather than a do-over, you know. So, we've done a few different things and you are aware. We've worked with, I started on the real estate study, and we have some interest from Stony Brook University. And so those things, you know, the more we talk to people about EPCAL, the more we talk, you know, whether it's a smaller group or a larger group or people outside of town, the state of New York is now, you know, really kind of keyed into it versus the way it was in the past. We were sort of, I would say, like an isolationist kind of approach to, to the property, rather than a long-term economic partnership with other, whether it's BNL or Stony Brook or Cold Spring Harbor or, you know, anybody. But the state is sort of now keyed in. We looked at that, you know, wind energy manufacturing and things like that. So, when, when the time comes and other, you know, we had a call, I think, maybe it was about a month ago, three weeks ago, about a month ago, with somebody from Empire State Development. A lot of times, the, the state has people looking for property. They don't say what the project is. They look for property, but they know we're here. And they, they're, they keep inserting it into the conversation. And the more that that happens, the more...
We're on their radar.
Exactly.
We're definitely on their radar.
That's the better way to say it.
So, the supervisor has always stated, and staff completely acknowledges, anything that happens at EPCAL is coming before this Town Board. So, I don't want any misconceptions that this group, or the supervisor individually, or staff are making any moves or could or would make any moves. It's all before the Town Board. But the benefit you have is that the Supervisor's Advisory Group is keeping staff fresh and on top of it. Am I right?
I agree.
Yeah. Don't, I'm going to say, I think the group, you know, it's great, and it's great. I'm finding this with the Navy, unearthing documents, right?
Exactly.
So, but I'm also concerned about the land, the industrial land, we, that's outside of the fence, that's, you know, some of that's for sale and ready to go. I don't want to wait for a lawsuit to be over to get industrial land. That's, you know...
Yeah, and those, and if there are properties, for instance, when the state calls, if there's properties that meet the criteria outside, and we did, in fact, the most recent time, send them something that was outside the fence. So, you know...
That's great. Like data centers of perfect...
Well, and actually, I just connected with Stony Brook on that yesterday to see if there's some interest in maybe pursuing that with the Congressional directed spending, something like that. So, you know, we're always kind of churning it. You know, we've only been at it for 20-plus years, so what the heck, you know?
But really, you know, during the pendency of the lawsuit, normally, you work on assignments that need work on. This could be put on the back burner, but this group and the supervisor is making sure it's not put on the back burner, even though there isn't an immediate, immediate assignment on it.
Okay. Any questions?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, ladies, so much. And thank you to the members of the CCDT team. Next up, we have matters surrounding changes to the Town Board Rules and Procedures with Councilor Howard.
She loves this. She loves this. She loves this one.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just, before we start, April 16th is the next CCDT meeting. April 16th, 10 o'clock in the upstairs conference room. Okay. Eric, go ahead.
All right. So, following our last meeting on this in work session, I got some feedback from all of you. And I've incorporated that into this revision. Is that we get a chance to take a look at it?
No, I didn't. I mean, I might have, because there's been a couple of iterations of this. I don't know which one this is.
All right. All right. So, I'll, I'll go through each of the, each of the changes I made. On page four, Rule Six, Subparagraph B, it relates to signs and flyers not permitted at the meetings of the Town Boards. It says flyers in that first sentence, but I just wanted to clarify in their distribution of flyers in the meeting room also not being permitted. Then, moving down to C under Rule Six, I sort of supplemented the language in there regarding the types of comments that would be considered inappropriate at the Town Board meeting. So, expanded on that, threatening profane, slanderous, impertinent, ethnic slurs, sexual slurs, that sort of thing. And then, within the same paragraph, also supplemented the language relating to the Supervisor's Authority to have someone removed. Basically says that, you know, the individual ordered to remove themselves fails to comply with the directive, law enforcement personnel may be utilized to enforce the order of removal. I think that, I think that just sort of clarifies what the process is going to be like over the prior draft.
It's really unfortunate that it's come to this.
Agreed.
The only thing I wonder about, like, is that if people have signs and they're in the, in the wayback, you know, you know, it doesn't really bother me, but...
No, but it becomes a policing matter again for the board. If they come in and they sit up here, then we got to have a move and change. And it's, to me, if you want to be in the lobby with the signs or out front, that's fine. But in here, we've, we've seen it at meetings where they're holding their signs up and the people behind them are like, "I can't see, I can't see." So, to me, it's, it's just a distraction, not necessary. There's a microphone right there. You can come up to the microphone and say whatever it is your sign says. So, to me, it's just a distraction for the meeting. So, I favor...
And we can't see the people behind the sign either. And also, we don't get a good read on the audience.
Sure. The other change was, we talked about, we were going to not allow on Zoom public comment on resolutions. And we're only going to have it for public hearings. I spoke to each of the board members about it, and we agreed that we will allow public comments on Zoom on the resolutions, just like they had been going on. The only difference being is they're limited to three minutes instead of five minutes.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah. So, the clarifications I put into Rule Nine, under comments on resolutions and comments on any matters are that there's going to be one opportunity per person to speak, that Zoom is going to be made available. And then, just some language encouraging concise comments and to refrain from repeating yourself. It's not necessarily expanded to repeating what others have said. It's just repeating yourself.
Right.
On the comments during public hearings, I put in some language relating to the discussion we had at the last work session, where the chair, depending on the attendance volume at the meeting, would have the ability to impose a time limit on the comments. But typically, that the chair's discretion in that area should be reserved for those heavily attended meetings. And, and also discretion to limit the number of opportunities for a certain individual to speak, right? So, we're going to, we're going to presumably allow everyone to speak. And then, if, you know, if the meeting hasn't gone on as long, or if people want to come back up a second time, that would be left to the chair's discretion. But it would be uniformly enforced with respect to each individual public hearing.
So, there's no, so we've lifted a time limit on that?
No, no, no. If, if we get like, say, a Scotts Point night, where we were packed with a lot of speakers, we're going to limit them to three minutes, even though it's a public hearing. After everybody has spoke, if somebody else didn't feel that they got their information out in three minutes, they can come back up to the microphone. But that's after everybody else has gone.
Yeah, this, yeah. This would be designed just to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to come up within, within reasonable amount of time.
Yeah. I think that was it on the candidates. Oh, no, there was.
The public comments relating to any matters, I clarified that they should be any matters relevant to the Town of Riverhead. So, you know, we don't need to come up and, you know, talk about things that are happening in Brookhaven necessarily, or New York City. These should be, the comments should be directed to matters that the five of you have, you know, discretion or authority to, to do something about.
So, bail reform is okay, because it's an Albany thing, but it affects us?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I'm just making sure.
You know, some sort of, some sort of nexus with the Town of Riverhead is what we're looking for.
But building a power plant in New Jersey, it's not, you know...
The only, the only other change, and I'm not, I'm not sure if this was in the prior
draft, but I'll just, or if we touched on it, just calling a resolution from the floor. Previously, it required attendance at the meeting of all five members of the Town Board, and then, all five members of the Town Board voting unanimously to take the resolution off the floor. That's been amended to require the attendance of at least four members of the Town Board with a, with an affirmative vote of three members of the Town Board to bring the resolution up for consideration. So, it sort of, sort of laxes the requirement to bring something off the floor, which would allow the board to respond to something that is, you know, something that's more urgent without having to ensure full attendance.
So, if your ass not here, we could...
Correct, yes.
I'm not going to be here that day.
Okay. We'll do a test, test one.
And that, that leave is the balance of the changes made in the prior draft. Do you have any further questions, recommendations, comments?
I do not. We, you know, we listened to what the people had to say. And, you know, we, we made the rule changes we wanted to make, but we also didn't just shut everybody out with the opportunity to comment. We just cut it down a little bit timewise, but everything's still basically going to be the same. So...
So, you know, permission to put in a resolution to adopt these at our next meeting?
Yes, for me.
Yeah. I'm just going to say, I got a great sign from one of the people that brought signs one time.
You did.
Put it in the hallway.
That's it. Let's tap it on, tap it on the wall. Got a little collection of them.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just bring up one, another?
Go ahead. I have one item left, but go ahead.
Oh, no, no, do it. Please, no, no, do it, because I want to wait till you finish with the others. I'm sorry.
Okay. Last item we have on open session is a Riverhead in Action video. I'm going to apologize before you watch it and just forewarn you that this may not be for all audiences. If you are scared of a big guy dancing on the dance floor, I warn you, you're going to see images of that, okay? So, maybe hide the kids and go ahead and roll it.
Let's go to lunch, Bob.
Yeah. Tim, you want popcorn?
This is Tim Hubbard, Supervisor of the great Town of Riverhead, and you're watching Riverhead in Action, a media campaign designed to highlight the incredible work of the 350-plus employees. They comprise Riverhead's 26 departments and sub-departments, town events, projects, job openings, local businesses, and other town happenings. I hope you find this informative and enjoyable, and thank you for watching Riverhead in Action.
Councilwoman Denise Maryfield and I are down at the Riverhead Senior Center. And today, they will be celebrating Valentine's Day. And we're about to go in and see what's going on in there. Denise?
Oh, it should be very enjoyable. I hear it's a packed house, live music, great food. Terrific way for everybody to spend the day together. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
Absolutely. We love our seniors. All the seniors that come here are here dressed up in red and ready to do some dancing. Denise, we're going to go in and mingle and meet with some of them, but this is just one of the things we have for the town, especially for our seniors that have paid their taxes for year after year after year. This is a little give back that the town has and supports for the seniors. They can come down here, they can get a lunch at a very, very nominal fee.
And a great lunch. The menu is amazing.
The food is amazing.
It is.
Activities, they plan trips, they do dancing lessons, they have musicians come in. It's just a great place for our senior community to come in, gather, socialize, get out of the house a little bit. I've been here many times before, and we have a lot of widows and widowers here. And they've had marriages come out of meetings from coming here to the Senior Center. So, it's such a good story.
There's music, there's dancing, and great food, like you said.
It really is.
I can't wait.
Absolutely. Well, let's go in and see what awaits us here. Wow, look at the crowd.
Yes. Everybody's enjoying a terrific lunch. I think it's, I think short rib today.
Short rib today is on the menu.
That's very nice of you.
Oh, it smells delicious.
Yeah.
This is so good. You know, during COVID, the numbers of people that would come here really dwindled down, and understandably so. But now that we're kind of post-COVID, the number of people that come here daily for a luncheon for activities has grown tremendously. Here we have with us Kelly Touchy, who's in charge of the Riverhead Senior Center. Kelly runs all the programs, develops all the programs down here with her fantastic staff. Some of the things you do here, Kelly, I know you do trips, you do classes, dance lessons, elaborate...
Exercise classes. People come in in the morning, they play cards, they play bingo, they have the computer room, they do puzzles, come in and socialize.
And you mentioned line dancing, right? They practice line dancing.
On Mondays, there's a, the group that was up here dancing, they come down to the activity room and they practice their, their dances on Mondays. Yes.
That's great.
That's awesome.
We've been trying to add more and more activities that we're getting more people in, so...
And you have a terrific menu. The luncheon menu here is amazing.
Yes, it is.
It's restaurant quality and variety, too. It's not just the same meal every day of the week. It's great.
And we're constantly looking to improve on it. And we take suggestions from the seniors that come in as far as activities and menu items they would like to see.
Can you tell us about the Meals on Wheels program?
The Meals on Wheels is especially for homebound seniors who can't really get out. Sometimes it's temporary. If someone had surgery and they're not able to get up and around and cook for themselves, we deliver a hot meal before lunch, so they can have it at lunchtime or they can reheat it later, Monday through Friday. We deliver about 150 meals a day.
That's great.
That's awesome.
In addition to what we serve here.
And you also provide transportation for people to come here as well?
Yes. Yes. Like today, we, we had four buses went out. We transported about 36 people in this morning to come to the party. So, and on a daily basis, we usually have three routes. So, we offer transportation to come in daily. And we have a lot of people that take advantage of it. They can't drive and they still want to come out and be active and socialize.
You provide bus transportation to go shopping?
Yes.
Sometimes to doctor's appointments if people need it?
Yes. As long as it's a doctor within the town, we can offer transportation.
That's a great service. It's a great program. Nothing but accolades we get about your program down here. So, keep up the good work, and we appreciate you joining us for another segment of Riverhead in Action.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you for coming. You too, you too, Denise. Thank you.
This is the backbone of the Senior Citizen Center here on Shade Tree Lane. These ladies every day prepare meals for dozens and dozens of our seniors. And just like today with the same Valentine's Day, luncheon, they're are busy. There's probably close to 100 people out there that they're serving lunches for. And this goes on, not only for the people that are here, but they also prepare meals for the people that are homebound. They can't get out of their house. About 130 meals they prepare for the Meals on Wheels also. Ladies, we appreciate it. Good job. We're going to make TV stars out of all of you. But keep up the good work, and we appreciate everything you do down here. Thank you.
And it's always delicious. And it's everybody compliments us.
They're all compliments galore out there about the food.
Yes, that it's delicious.
Good to see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Happy Valentine's Day. Those of you who don't know me, my name is Tim Hubbard. I'm your town supervisor. And I'm honored to be here today. And I'm honored to be here today with Councilwoman Denise Maryfield, my deputy supervisor, Devin Higgins, and this handsome gentleman over here with the black bow tie on. Higgins, and this handsome gentleman over here with the black bow tie on, our town clerk and former town councilman. Available to be auctioned off to a senior later. Glad to see everybody out. I will dance if anybody wants to dance. Reverend Bell, I owe my first dance to her, because she comes to all of our town board meetings, and she does the invocations, she says the prayers. And she's such a sweet lady, and I went to school with some of her children. Enjoy your dessert. Happy Valentine's Day.
And forevermore, that's how you stay supporting me.
How's Lisa going to feel about this?
Considering I never danced.
Oh, you're in trouble.
Yeah. I have to tell you, though, they told me I was very light on my feet until I stepped on theirs. Then they said I wasn't so light anymore.
Let's give all my couples a nice hand, ladies and gentlemen. See you soon. Happy Valentine's Day. Senior Center runs such a great program down there, and I'm so glad to see that after COVID, the numbers are coming back, because understandably, during COVID, people weren't going out. But they do so many good things down there, and the seniors really have a good time, and it gets them out of the house for the day. And the kitchen staff is incredible. They make delicious meals all the time. So, if you're out there watching, and you're a senior in town, go down there. There's so much good stuff. And they have, you know, we have what we call Silver Seniors now, who are seniors that are coming up, that are more, the younger end of seniors, but they're more like computer-acclimated, where some of our older seniors may not have gotten that training, or worked with computers so much in their life. The younger seniors coming up are, so they have activities and things for them also. So, just keep that in mind. It's a great program, and Kelly Touchy does a fantastic job and her whole staff.
Everybody was so happy there. Everyone we spoke to. And it was a frigid day.
It was cold.
It was really cold, and so many people came out, even in the cold weather. It was so nice.
I think we have a proud town clerk who's a proud father watching his daughter there.
Yes, absolutely.
Good job, Olivia.
Absolutely. Good deal. Okay, Bob, you had a matter?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, I think I told you this, I had a call yesterday morning about that there was a, you know, what was going on with the parking garage, and I said, I don't know, you know, we haven't seen any plans. And the person said to me, well, it's on your website. I couldn't find it. They then sent me a link. All I'm going to say is that in the future, before something goes on our website, it really should come to the town board, you know, for a work session, or be discussed with the town board. That's, you know.
Agreed. I have to find out where that came from and who put it up there, because.
I felt like, you know, like, you're a town board member. How could you not know it's on your website?
Yeah. I didn't know it was there. So, you're right. Okay. Resolutions. Deputy Supervisor Higgins.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Ready, ready to go?
We are ready to go.
Hit it, Devin.
Okay, let's hit it. Resolution number one, budget adoption for the removal of all litter, garbage, refuse, rubbish upon the premises known as 12 Longview Drive, Riverhead, Suffolk County, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-14-2-12. Number two, EPCAL Emergency Access Road Capital Project for Number 52311, budget adoption.
This was for the emergency access road, going back to Scotts Point.
Resolution number three, Water District Capital Project Number 82050, budget adoption. Number four, accepts donation of roses for the senior center.
George Gabrielson donated 125 roses, I think, to the, so each senior that left got a rose on Valentine's Day, plus he got bouquets, supplied bouquets for all the staff down there, which, and we know, George donates to Point Setters at Christmas time. He donates money to our recreation fund. I just, the Gabrielson family is, they've done great by the town, and we appreciate that. And it made a lot of smiles on a lot of faces down there. So, thank you so much, George. We appreciate that. You and your daughters put that together, and we appreciate all that.
The whole Gabrielson family.
Yes.
Resolution number five, accepts donation from Tuttle Mangano Funeral Home for the senior center. Also a very generous donation.
We're walking in with that. There was a big lottery tree with all kinds of lottery tickets hanging on it that Sal Mangano put together and donated down to the seniors down here. Again, it's just, this town, the people in this town are great. Good stuff. Thank you, Sal.
Resolution number six, authorizes sewer district employee to attend seminar. Resolution number seven, reappoints members and appoints one member to the Small Business Advisory Committee. All the names are listed in the "Now, therefore be it resolved" at the bottom of the resolution.
Can I just go back for a moment? I just want to ask on 1.6. It's talking about Michael Reichel going in May?
No. It's not Michael going. It's a different employee, that GFC number that's listed there. It's just Michael Reichel as the current super, Water District, Sewer District Superintendent is requesting that that particular employee go.
Michael will actually be retired by.
Right. That's why I was asking.
Okay. So, I think we'll go to resolution number eight. Appoints Ken Zillnicki, a member of the Riverhead Farmland Preservation Committee.
Great choice.
Resolution number nine, appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator trainee. This is actually one of three, and we'll talk about the other two in a couple of resolutions from now. Resolution number 10, appoints an automotive mechanic, too. Resolution number 11, ratifies the transfer of an employee into provisional appointment of a community development program analyst. It'll be effective March 3rd, but by the time you guys pass this resolution, it will have already happened, so it'll be ratified. Resolution number 12, it ratifies the appointment of a wastewater treatment plant operator, I'm sorry, of wastewater treatment plant operator trainees, plural, two. So, that's, this is two existing folks that we have that are provisional status now. So, we're going to remove the provisional status, and then the other gentleman that we appointed is the third, referring to the three trainees.
Right. These two had been working there, but they were pending the results of the civil service exam.
Number 13, ratifies the appointment of an automotive equipment operator. Number 14, ratifies the promotion of an employee to Assistant Recreation Superintendent One. Resolution number 15, ratifies the promotion of a public safety dispatcher, one, to a public safety dispatcher, two. Number 16, approve salary adjustments for municipal garage mechanics. Number 17, terminates an inactive employee from the Riverhead Police Department. Number 18, authorizes the supervisor to execute a license agreement with Broadcast Music, Inc., BMI. Number 19, authorizes the supervisor to execute a lease renewal agreement authorizing the town to lease a vehicle from Suffolk County Office for the Aging for Transportation Services for Elderly Residents, NUC Protonk. Resolution number 20, ratifies authorization to purchase Calrez 2109 for the Water District. That's, I'm told, some sort of treatment medium that.
A filter media used for the treatment of impurities in the water.
And number 21, amends adopted rules and procedures for the, for town board of the Riverhead, I don't know what's happening with me today, for town board of the town of Riverhead.
As we talked about before.
Number 22, approved special event, Chapter 255, application for St. John the Baptist Ukrainian Church Blessings of the Cars Show. Number 23, approved special event, Chapter 255, application for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation CF Cycle for Life. Number 24, awards request for qualifications for engineering services during construction for Class A Bio-Solids Upgrade Project for Riverhead Sewer District. And we have a gentleman from H2M with us today, and we also have Tim Allen, if anybody has any specific questions on that. The gentlemen are here, and they can field those.
You guys want to just give a real quick synopsis of what this is?
It's, we had to go out to engineering services for the construction of it.
This is Tim Allen, by the way, or?
Deputy Superintendent.
Deputy Superintendent for the time being.
So, we had to go for EFC funding. So, we get funding for, it's, so we had to go out for this to, it's a new thing they changed in their funding for practice. So, we had to go out for this. So, and there was only one person that came to put the papers in, and that was H2M.
And Chris, you're from H2M?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. Chris Wise from H2M. Yeah, EFC added this to their requirements for funding beginning of 2024, and all services being paid for funding had to be done where you have to procure for an open RFQ process for engineering services. So, that's what everything's for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting all that time.
Okay. Resolution 25, assumes lead agency issues conditional negative declaration for the site plan application of Island Water Park, DBA Scotts Point, 5835 Middle Country Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-135-1-7.34. And we have planning staff in the room, if anybody has any questions on that. The Wise will go to resolution number 26, adopts a local law amending Chapter 207 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Animals. Number 27, adopts a local law amending Chapter 257 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Peddling and Soliciting. Number 28, adopts a local law amending Chapter 301 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Zoning and Land Development, Section 301-229, yard sales, attic sales, garage sales, and auction sales.
These last three were all about updating the fees for the registrations or the permits that are needed, that have been long overdue.
Resolution 29, ratifies authorization for the supervisor to execute an agreement with the Riverhead Town Police Benevolent Association.
This is finally the PBA contract that has been signed by both the town and the PBA president, and the board has finished up all the crossing the i's and, or dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and it was ready to go. So, it is now finally completed. Okay. That ends our open session for our work session agenda today. In a moment, I'm going to ask to close the open session and go into executive session to speak about legal matters, matters surrounding the sale and lease of real property with Thomas Hurley and Prudente, matters surrounding the status of an employee with Howard and Striplin T.O., and matters surrounding contractual agreement between the town of Riverhead and Abidma with Hubbard and Woski. Do I have a motion to close the open work session?
Make a motion?
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, open session is closed. We will now retire to executive session. Thank you, everybody, and have a fantastic weekend.